Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of January 21st here at Memorial Town Hall. I'm calling the meeting to order. First order of business would be any sort of announcements. Ed, did you have anything? Diana?
I do not.
Marlene, did you have anything?
Mm-hmm.
All right, then, I'm going to ref-- I have one thing to talk about that came from the school department. And that would be, there's a program about, a conversation about keeping our community safe and preventing violence, which is going to be held by, or facilitated by, the Northwestern District Attorney's Office. Sorry, I'm just coming back from vacation, so I'm having a hard time speaking. Northwestern District Attorney's Office, Dave Sullivan's office. And it's going to be a joint session with the Hatfield Heads Up. And as I mentioned, it's about beyond gun laws is the title. And it's a conversation about keeping our community safe. Mike, Chief DeKoschak's here for another issue. He's going to be one of the facilitators, if I'm not mistaken. So it's going to discuss the effects, I'm assuming, of guns and youth and violence and all of that type of thing. And there's going to be a discussion in a panel, so, okay. So that's on February 11th. And that's at the Hatfield Elementary School, from 6:30 to 8:30. I would think if you had any questions, you could probably reach out to the school department, you know, the office at Smith Academy, and they could give you any of the specifics you might need. Also, Marlene, under announcements, I see that there's some vacancies.
We have two vacancies, one on the Historical Commission, one on the Emergency Management Planning Committee. Unfortunately, it's a result of the passing of Charlie Kellogg. And so just want to get it out there that we'll be posting those positions. Anyone that's interested can contact my office.
Okay. Will we be doing an official posting for those two? Or is this kind of the announcement saying that these?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is. We'll draft up a posting and submit it to the town clerk.
All right. So this has to do with a seat on the Historical Commission and a seat on the Emergency Management Committee. And then lastly, as I read at all of our meetings, we just, kind of the guidance from our public participation at Select Board meetings, and any of the meetings actually, from our town boards and committees. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So, thank you. Is there anybody here for public forum before we start? Mike?
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I do have a couple of comments that I would like to make in the public forum setting.
Yep.
But I think these might be also pertinent to the Finance Committee when the Finance Committee arrives.
Okay.
So if I could ask that you could give me five minutes of time for a community forum comment when that arena opens, I appreciate it.
Okay. So you'd like to have your public comment during the session with the?
Enjoy.
Okay, that's sort of defeating the-- so, is there something you'd like to say now regarding anything that's on tonight's agenda?
I might be the only one from the Finance Committee.
So there's not a, yeah, this isn't a joint meeting, by the way, of the Select Board in the Finance Committee.
We posted it because it was possible that more of us would show up.
Right.
But so far, I'm the only one here.
Thank you, Betsy. So Mike, if there's something that you thought might come up later, or is it moot now because there's really not a Finance Committee meeting?
I think it might even be appropriate, you know, when you guys take up the posted business of the finance accounting position and the budget update, the 2021 budget update. So that's why I'd like to, if I have five minutes, then--
Let's see, well--
See, you know, I don't want to take up--
Yeah, I get it.
You've got people waiting.
The idea, quite honestly, right, is these meetings, as all the boards, are to take up the business that's basically come up since our last meeting. So I will do my best to try to be fair to people and allow them to make comments if appropriate. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. We have some minutes to approve if anybody's--
I don't think I have them.
Oh.
I didn't see any.
Sorry, it's on the agenda. Standard agenda item, so there are no minutes in here. My bad.
No.
Sorry. Or all three of us didn't see them. Okay. Posted business, topic number one. We're going to receive a report tonight from the Fire Chief Search Committee, who's worked over the last month or so, the last few weeks, last month or so, to receive applicants for the opening for the Fire Chief position, review them, and then make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen from that committee. And we'll be hearing that tonight from Chief DeKoschak, who was, in fact, one of the five members. And I don't know if you were the chairman, I mean, it doesn't really matter, but--
Yeah, I'm the one that can show up.
All right. Would you mind stepping forward?
Did you guys get the packet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So essentially--
Mike, I'm sorry. Would you mind just, it makes it a little easier on John to swing the camera around, so--
So, am I going to stand or sit?
Oh, please, be seated. Whatever you're comfortable.
Essentially, what we did was, we had seven applications for that position. Of those seven applications, four met the criteria for the job description, the job posting. Of those four, we scheduled interviews with those four. One dropped out the night before his scheduled interview for personal reasons. The remaining three, we interviewed last Thursday.
Okay.
We conducted those interviews from 10:30 until about 2:30 in the afternoon on Thursday. In the letter that I wrote to the guys, summing everything up, essentially, all three candidates are, all three highly qualified. They all possess the experience that you would need in the firefighting area, as well as the paramedic area. And because of them all having, you really can't differentiate between these candidates as in terms of who is better than who. We used a scoring criteria. And you have in your packet a list of the questions that we asked, and scoring notes from 1 to 10, so giving a maximum score of 120 that you could get from the 12 questions with a high score of 10. They all scored within just a couple of points of one another. So they were very evenly matched. And each committee member, there were five, scored each and every candidate on their own, and then we averaged those scores. So that being as close as it was, we couldn't make an actual recommendation as to a single candidate that would be best to be brought forward. So all three candidates are being brought forward for you guys to do what you want, interview, or come up with some other criteria and pick a number you want to interview, if not all three of them.
Okay. Diana?
I, no, I was just going to say, I really appreciate the work of the screening committee. It's a lot of work. I've been on them, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Ed, did you have anything?
I want to thank the committee for all their work. My only comment would move forward and we'll set up the interviews. And we can determine how to set up those interviews, whether we do a half an hour with a 15-minute break, whether we want to interview each candidate, then talk about that candidate, then interview the next one, or whether or not those candidates can all come on the same day, or whether it's got to be different days. So now it's going to be a scheduling type of thing, right?
I would agree with you. I--
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. Also, Mike, I'd like to thank you and the committee members for doing that. And I think it bodes well for us, for the town, that, you know, you were able to bring forward three candidates that were so closely matched, or so close, have similar backgrounds when you guys did your tallying of the scores. So I think that's a very good sign.
Can I maybe say who was on the committee?
Oh, yeah, please do.
Because I think it's really--
Please do.
I think it's really useful for townspeople to know who was on the committee--
Absolutely.
Because I think that it was a well-thought-out. So it was obviously Police Chief Mike DeKoschak, Hadley Fire Chief Mike Spanknebel, Hatfield Lieutenant Luke Longstreet, and then two community members, Christopher Hoffman and Dave Keir.
Yep.
So absolutely great committee.
It was a good, it was a good mix.
Right.
Yep.
And that's what you look for, you know, for any committee, but when you have a screening committee--
And for the town, we probably should try to televise it so they can all see the candidates too.
Oh, yeah.
When we interview.
That's what we've done in the past, so the final interviews are televised. So, you know, we'll get our schedules together, and we'll get together with John as well to see when that can happen. All right.
But we won't drag our feet.
Well, that's entirely up to you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it, Mike.
Yes, we do appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. So just as a reminder, the Fire Chief's contract was extended to January 31st.
Right.
And he very much, you know, would like to see a smooth transition--
Yeah.
--and is willing to have another discussion with the Board of Selectmen about extending his contract.
Yeah, and I think I speak for my--
He talked to me personally about that.
Yeah, I did myself as well. And I think I speak for all of our colleagues, or for my colleagues, when we say that we appreciate Chief gone, willing to do that, and to be looking out for the town as a whole as far as making sure there's a smooth transition and not walking out the door one day and somebody's walking in the next. And so that's a good thing. So we'll get our schedules going. We'll talk about the extension, and we'll--
And set up some dates for--
Yep, yep, so.
Perfect.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
I'm going to hang on to those.
Yes.
Yes. So why don't we ask, so we've got the, a report coming on the water and sewer survey, or I should say, a presentation, actually, as far as the water, the sewer, the rates, the work that's going to need to be done, the forecasting of things, life expectancies of equipment and facilities, and how that may affect the rates for all of us, for those of us that are on water, on sewer and/or water. So, you know, we've got to pay for things to keep them up to snuff in following the laws and DEP and things like that. So, having said all that, why don't I turn it over to Dave and company? We've got some information coming. Phil, Eric, we've got four seats up front, so enough for everybody.
Oh, you want that? If you sit over here, they won't be able to see you.
Good evening. So why, yeah, some handouts coming--
We'll provide info shortly. James has just provided a copy of the handout for those that might not have--
Right.
There's plenty for the public.
Thank you.
This is different than what I have? Okay.
We appreciate it. Thanks, James. And Dave, just when James is ready, why don't you just give a little, you know, little background for those who don't remember you from any past meeting that you've been--
I'm Dave Prickett, joined this evening by James Rivers. We're with DPC Engineering. To my right's Phil Genovese, DPW Director, and Eric Mills, Superintendent of Wastewater. This evening, what we'd like to do is provide a brief overview of the wastewater management plan that the town of Hatfield and the residents commissioned about two years ago.
Yes.
And that focused on looking at the entire wastewater system, pipes and pump stations and treatment plant. And we'll also talk about how the rubber meets the road. So anytime we look at a plan and we start developing recommendations, the next thing, and it's always a challenging topic to talk about, is how do you implement the plan? How do you pay for it? What's this going to look like for the residents and ratepayers in Hatfield? So this evening, we'll provide a brief overview of this, or attempt at a brief overview from an engineer's perspective. And we look forward to any questions that the Select Board might have of us. We've had the opportunity, I believe there's one or two representatives from Finance. We met in several kind of workshop formats during the day with staff, elected and appointed representatives, to try to work through this, leading up to this meeting. So for some of you, this is new, and for others, you've heard it before. So we'll do our best to keep everybody moving.
Great, thank you very much.
So, yeah, anything you'd like to add, Mr. Chairman, before we get into it?
No, no. I was fortunate to be able to be at some of those meetings and then out of town for others, but I appreciate you guys coming out and answering the questions, going back. You know, after our initial meeting, it was sort of, we asked to get an update and more specific pricing and costs and engineering specs, so we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And that's why we, tonight, thought it was appropriate to have it televised, so the residents and the townspeople could actually hear where we're coming from.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
So a little bit of background on the wastewater side, we'll start there.
Yep.
Obviously, we did quite a deep dive. This evening, we presented a copy of the report to Eric on that wastewater management plan. Pretty significant effort, but overall, Hatfield has a pretty impressive wastewater system, infrastructure. We'd estimate that if you were to reconstruct your sewers and pump stations and treatment plants today, you'd be looking at over $100 million investment. So that's the value of that asset if it were to be constructed today. So as we start talking about some of the improvements to that, it kind of puts things in context.
Right.
Most of your system is at least 40 years old, so your treatment plant was constructed in the early 1980s, along with all the other treatment plants in the region that was required by EPA back in the day. And some of your pipes in the old parts of the system are over 100 years old. A lot of clay pipes, not uncommon, are atypical, I should say. Like many of your neighboring communities, you have old infrastructures. We're in New England, so it's an aging asset, for sure. One of the things that was important, particularly to Phil and Eric as we went through this, was not only taking a look at what the capital program might be to fix some of those aging assets, but to make sure that we're adequately funding the operation and maintenance of the utilities, both on the wastewater and water side. And that's important. We provided a lot of benchmarking along the way to show what other communities do. We always say that every utility is unique and independent. So some of the things we'll talk about this evening are progressions that we recommend that Hatfield take over the coming years to both adequately fund your assets and to plan for the upcoming capital projects. So we'll get into that in a minute. The recommendations from the wastewater management plan were total of $32 million over the next 20 to 25 years. Now, the current recommended plan that's been on the table that we've looked at, the financing, is comprised of about a $12 million plan. The majority of those costs are, as you would expect, at the treatment plant. That's the most mechanically intensive system. You also have several pump stations, including your Maple Pump Station, which serve as the pumping at the low points up to the treatment plant. And then you have some minor pipe repairs and such that you would expect that you'd make, as you have over the years on emergency basis. One of the things that we'll talk about this evening is, as we look forward to a major capital project, one of the most critical elements to the success of that is whether Hatfield is able to secure a long-term, low-interest loan together with a grant to help offset those capital costs. There's some strategy involved here. USDA is probably the best, is in fact, the best funding mechanism available to a community like Hatfield of your size. However, they have some specific underwriting criteria. So shortly, we're going to come back to that on the sewer side when James provides an overview of some strategy that you might use now to plan for that, to get your rates up, to improve your grant funding percentage. Right now, on the sewer side, you've got a current rate of a little over $7 per 100 cubic foot. So people on the sewer side are billed based on the water that they use. It's a very common method that's used in the industry. What we're looking at in terms of the rates, and there's some detailed graphs on the back of this handout, are projections based on the cost. James, if you want to get into some of the finer details on the sewer side?
Yeah, so looking at the sewer rates, just to recap, as Dave mentioned, the main drivers for our proposed rate increase that we discussed with the group was making sure that we're adequately funding the wastewater utility and assuring that we're planning for the proposed capital and qualifying for USDA funding if we chose to apply. So the USDA criteria for securing a grant include having the sewer rates be at least 1% of the median household income, which right now, Hatfield is below. So that's a very specific underwriting criteria, that if it's not met, you will not be eligible for a grant. So that was a main driver. So the proposed rate, we came up with looking forward with the group, moving forward with the group, was 25% in year one. And part of this is to help to cover the planned costs of future capital, to qualify for the potential grant funding, and to assure that we're putting enough into the wastewater budget to cover expenses that are being accrued throughout the year. So if you look at the figure on the backside, you can see we've had very modest rate increases over the past few years, just 2%. And this is just to keep up with some of the modest O&amp;M increases you've made. But looking back at the budget, we found that O&amp;M is actually much higher than we're typically budgeting for. So that's also taking that into account. At the top, we can see the average statewide residential sewer cost. And as you can see, Hatfield's well below. And every community's different. There's a lot of factors that affect these rates. But we do believe that Hatfield is still modest and competitive when it comes to the statewide average, even with the increase on the sewer side.
So just to put things in perspective, as you look at the possibility of implementing a $12 million capital plan, it's not to be taken lightly. We've assumed, for the sake of presenting this and having a discussion, that those costs would be borne by the sewer users. So that's how things are presented. I know that's not always like things have been done historically, but for the purpose of evaluating the impacts on households, that's how we presented it. One of the things to understand is that absent USDA, Hatfield would be able to go secure a 20-year loan from either the state or from a bank. Hatfield has really good bond rating, but a 20-year note at 2% versus a USDA-funded project, which allows for a 40-year loan at a current interest rate of about 1.625, together with approximately a 20% grant. And we estimate that based on what we've seen in similar communities. The difference to the average residential customer at the end of the project is 50, over $50 per month per household, the two options. So we understand clearly that we are talking about a proposed 25% increase to the sewer rates. However, absent that increase to get us up to and above the threshold for grant eligibility, the impact, you know, four years out after the project were to be constructed, would be far more burdensome to the residents of Hatfield and the sewer users. So therein lies the strategy. We've done similar projects and USDA funding commitments. Town of Orange, we helped them through the same path. Their rates were too low when we started. We helped them secure, it was about a 40% grant for a $15 million project. And just more recently, Town of Deerfield, we were up to do the same thing, get their rates up, and they were able to secure a 23% grant for an $11.5 million project. So the precedent exists. You know, every community is unique and distinct, and some of it is the cycle of how money's available at the federal level. But in my professional opinion, absent USDA funding in the form of a grant, low-interest loan, I don't see that the project would be affordable to the residents of Hatfield. Most of what's proposed, and obviously, we're glossing over a lot of super boring detail about wastewater treatment plants, but Brian, you mentioned at the beginning, it's to meet regulatory requirements, renew an aging and old asset, bring things up in well into the 21st century. And it's, wastewater is a, is an expensive thing to construct. It's also an expensive thing to defer. We're seeing right now about 4.3% average annual inflation for wastewater construction. There aren't a lot of contractors that specialize in this type of work. And those that do, pretty good at doing what they're doing. So it's a pretty small captive audience when it comes to construction costs.
Right. And if I may interject something?
Please.
You, in the beginning, Dave, you mentioned that the, and all the residents know this, that the wastewater treatment plant's approximately 40, 40 years old. What you hadn't mentioned, but I highlighted it as we were going through this, is, but the typical life expectancy of all the mechanical equipment is 20 years.
Correct.
So, you know, we're fortunate. And I know we've had some replacements. We had the special meeting last year. But things, you know, things are going to continue to age, obviously. And so this is something that, it's going to have to happen, right?
Right.
You know, and nobody wants to talk about higher rates. I'm on the sewer, you know. But you've got to be realistic, too, and understand that rates don't go down, prices don't go down--
Right.
--to fix things or to replace things. And there does not appear to me, and I know you've got more to discuss, but it just doesn't seem like it's something worth deferring if we've got an opportunity to get a, to get a grant from the USDA.
We can actively or passively kick the can, so it's--
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, right.
You know, I think you've been pretty, you've done a really good job of managing your asset efficiently and effectively, kept your costs down. Your operations team, over the years, through Eric and preceding that with Brian, have, you know, done a lot to extend the life expectancy of the equipment, both with, you know, mechanical expertise and, you know, the old Yankee ingenuity of stretching that out as far as you can. But I will say that you're, you're well poised, as you likely remember from the Route 5 project up to Church Street, the economic development that comes with having sewer and water capacity to allocate to commercial development and what that does to the, to the tax base in Hatfield over a longer period of time. So it's an asset, but it's also one in municipal spectrum. There aren't many that result in economic opportunities. So it's good to preserve, protect, maintain, et cetera. It's your lifeblood as a community.
If I may, I understand the reason for the rate increase is if we want to go after that 40-year USDA loan, we would have to slightly increase our rates because the USDA wants to ensure that we'll have money to pay for it. I mean, basically, that's--
They want to make sure on a 40-year note that you're a sound financial partner, right? So it's a business decision for USDA. And it's not to say that Hatfield hasn't been, but they have criteria they use to benchmark you against other potential applicants. So if we can demonstrate that you're being proactive as opposed to reactive and getting ahead of that curve, it just positions the town for much longer financial success, stability, affordability for the residents, et cetera. It's a big jump to take, but, you know, you've, you've somewhat trailed or lagged the market in terms of how annual increases have seen in statewide and other communities, so that's afforded the residents.
This has worked for some other communities, right? You've done it with--
Absolutely, yeah.
Can you sort of elaborate on how it's worked for other communities?
Yeah, I think that I mentioned briefly that the two most notable that we've worked with recently are Town of Orange, Mass. and Town of Deerfield. And those two were able to secure 40% and 23% grants respectively for 10-plus million-dollar projects. So State of Massachusetts only gets $10 to $15 million per year for USDA. They have the ability annually to go back and collect the money that comes back from the national office, and both of those communities have done that. We're working with others right now, but, you know, you're, you're kind of right in that nice cycle to be in between some projects. And, you know, if you ever do decide that you want to bring this to the residents, I always say, it's nice to be able to put a buffalo on the table in the form of a, of a, "Okay, we've secured a really nice grant in long-term low-interest loans. Residents, now can you support this?" You know, what comes with this, which at the end of the day is, how much is this going to cost me?
Yeah. Betsy? Oh, sorry.
In this 12 million, it doesn't include any expansion of the system?
That does not include any expansion, although I would say that by upgrading your treatment plant, Phil and Eric have the ability to continue to serve Hatfield. You know, your asset is sized, your treatment plant is sized, such that I can't imagine you couldn't do what you want to do in Hatfield for all of our generations and likely our kids' generation. So that's, that's somewhat atypical, but a good thing for Hatfield, so I don't know if I answered that well.
No, you did. I'm good.
Betsy?
We're at 30% right now? That's what I'm hearing? Would that be correct?
Capacity.
Capacity-wise for our plan? I was told we're at like 30%.
Yeah, probably 30, 35, somewhere in that area, depending on what day it is.
That's right.
It goes up and down quite a bit, so.
Betsy?
The Finance Committee participated in a lot of, I participated as part of Finance Committee in a lot of these, most of these meetings. And I'm not a big fan of spending money. I'm always trying to find ways to not spend money. But here's the deal. What we discovered is that consistently, our actual expenses for maintaining this system are higher than what we budget. And since the Finance Committee is responsible for budgeting, this is aggravating because we keep trying to create a budget that's real, and the cost of maintaining the system is more than we budget each year through nobody's fault. It just, that's the way it goes. So what happens is we don't have any retained earnings to save up for capital improvements that will be required, not for the fun of it, but because the Department of Environmental Protection will be all over us if we don't make these consistent adjustments to the system, to make sure that it's within compliance. And so what happens when we don't have enough retained earnings is that we end up having to take out a loan or spreading that increase throughout our taxation base. So although, Brian, I too am one of the few users of the sewer system in town, I think that we should at least try to get the users of the system to begin to pay enough money for the actual cost of this system. Thank you.
Thanks, Betsy. Mike?
Yes. Just a quick question. And I certainly understand the motivation to increase the sewer budget to the level that would meet the minimum requirements for the USDA loan. And the question I have is, you've got here fiscal 2020's budget at $454,000. I'm assuming that that's the enterprise, the enterprise department's budget, the sewer, the budget from the enterprise.
So that's the average cost per residential sewer user is $454 per year at your current sewer rate?
Okay. I guess my question is, have you included in that cost the costs that are being subsidized by taxation?
So the way the budget's set up right now, all debt that's been approved is already on the taxation. So this cost just includes what we believe represents where the budget should be, plus future capital on? So no proposed future capital is on the taxation with this proposed increase?
Right. I guess my question is, if you, if we added the debt burden that's associated with the sewer and sewer treatment plant at this point, if we added the indirect costs associated with overseeing the sewer and the infrastructure, i.e., you know, some of Phil's costs, there are, there's equipment that sheared between the DPW and the sewer department. So I guess my point is, if we took those indirect costs, which are now being paid by the, all taxpayers, not just the enterprise sewer budget, would that budget then be larger than $454,000? And would it then exceed the 1% threshold? So, you see what I'm saying? Is it...
I do understand, yeah.
Guys, I think I understand what your question is. I, and I don't want to speak for Dave and James. I believe they, what they did was, this is what it costs for a resident or business, you know, here's the sewer cost. Where the money came to pay for that, I don't know, was part of, that's what we do our, when we do our budgets. That's what we do.
And you know that part of that is subsidized by taxation.
Yes, yeah, correct. Correct. I don't...
And what is that being added to this $454,000? And if that's the case, then that $454 may very well exceed the 1% threshold. Therefore, we wouldn't have to necessarily have a 25% increase in sewer rates in order to achieve that, because some of the money's coming out of taxation.
The idea, but the idea, I believe, is, I would, I don't want to speak for the Finance Committee, and they're not all here. We have not met to have this kind of a discussion yet from a, as we get ready to do our budgets. But I think what I would like is to see less subsidies from the town and the rate payer pay their portion of the cost. So I don't know if I'm answering your question, so...
It's another issue, Brian. I understand what you're saying.
Well, yeah.
But what I'm saying is that this $454,000, I'm assuming is the...
Where's the 4...
No, you're misreading this chart. That is the estimated average annual residential sewer cost.
It's not a 4,000.
That's not, so you're misreading.
And have you, have you arrived at that by taking the enterprise?
No. They've taken that by looking at the sewer rate and saying, if we, you need to be at this level, right? You need to increase it by 1%, by 1%.
So what, no, my point is, my point is that I'm hoping that in this $454, we should also add the indirect costs associated with supporting the sewer infrastructure and the sewer treatment plant that are being paid from taxation.
If I may?
And maybe they're in there.
Please.
I don't know.
So the way it's structured right now, we looked at it the way USDA looks at the criteria, which is looking at your sewer rate and what you're paying. The way it's set up right now, so, and I can't speak for how the town operates, but I believe the past debt that's on the taxation must, that's where it is. So we can't carry those costs into this $454, because that's not the way, USDA doesn't look at the tax patient portion paid and the sewer portion paid. They just look at sewer rate. And as far as the indirect costs, those are included in here. Right now, the sewer budget pays about $42,000 a year in indirect costs to the general fund.
Right, but it's not all of it, but...
But that portion was appropriated. So if it was chosen that more of those costs were budgeted into the sewer budget, that would actually just make this number go up a little higher, because...
Closer to the 1% threshold.
Well, no, the total, because this 567 is covering the expenses that are proposed. So if we're adding more expenses, it's actually going to go up...
Right.
Right.
Higher.
The short answer is that effectively, the net or gross cost per household is higher than shown on Figure 1. However, we've evaluated and modeled the data in the manner in which USDA reviews the data. So at the end of the day, this is, these are the criteria that they use to evaluate you as a potential grant applicant. So the gentleman's correct in that, you know, there's always a different effective cost per household, but unfortunately, you know, we're trying to play within their game, their playbook, if you will, and keep things on par, so.
Right. So in fiscal '21, in our fiscal '21 planning, if we, if we fully loaded the sewer enterprise fund budget with the costs that are currently being paid by taxation, would then the rate that we're looking at here come closer to the 1% threshold, and therefore, we would not have to increase our rates by 25%? That's my point.
Putting the rate where we're going to, or hopefully going to next fiscal year, will get us away from putting things on the taxpayers. If we get our rate to where we're going with this 25% increase, that'll move us away from the taxpayers having to pay for sewer department subsidies and the non-users. So the stuff that's already over there, we can't put that on the sewer department. It has to stay where it's at right now. We can't pull that out and put it on the sewer department. It's already been approved, everything, all the loans, everything is through and with the taxpayers paying for it. Go ahead.
And just to reiterate, it's really the rate we're looking at, and these numbers are based on the average consumption. So even if those expenses are put onto the burden of the sewer users, the rate based on what the average person pays is going to be the 567 regardless, because it's based on the average consumption and the rate, not the expenses.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Where were we?
I think we were kind of in the pause between sewer and water. I mean, this is great. The dialogue is really...
I think maybe that, we should be, maybe at least just tell them what the actual end game is.
Right. And if we're back, you know, the 25, the proposed 25% rate increase, for your consideration, results in an average increase to the residential sewer user, sewer customer, of about $9.40 per month. So usually, when you boil things down on a monthly basis...
That's important for people to know.
It helps resonate.
Right.
So undoubtedly, this is a big step from where you are right now. What we're trying to do is minimize the step on the backside of the project. And, you know, as I mentioned a little bit, if you don't get a grant and you use conventional financing on a 20-year note versus a 40-year note at, you know, they call it a poverty rate. I hate that term because it sounds, you know, not good, but we'll take whatever they call it at that point. 1.625 is less than inflation with a 20% grant. The difference at the end of the project, if you were to get USDA versus not, would be about $50 to $55 more per month per household for the project. So again, it's almost not even a possibility without the USDA subsidy. It's, that's a lot. It's a lot of money per household.
20% grant, how much does that add up to?
Well, 20% of 12 million bucks, and I'll struggle with my math here, somewhere between 2 and 3.
Going to half.
Yeah. And that's not written in stone, but, you know, I think you compare pretty similarly with Deerfield in terms of metrics and, you know, median household income and everything else, and they were at 23. So 20, I think, is a good planning number. We're going to shoot for a heck of a lot better than that, but at the end of the day, I don't want to plan for something optimal and then be disappointed either.
Right.
So we could probably transition if we're ready to the water side, which...
Please.
Maybe we should have tackled that one, that one first. That one's a little, a little cleaner, a little less threatening, if you will, in terms of what it means to the average customer. So on the water side, you're in much better shape with your mechanical systems. You know, your treatment plant, you know, up on the mountain there is much newer. You've got some old pipes, certainly, as you've experienced in those winter months and past winters with fixing them. But mechanically, you know, you're far better off. So, you know, we would anticipate, and we have not been through a robust plan on the water side, but we'd estimate that you likely have $5, $6 million worth of water capital over the next five years. And that's more just kind of systematically, you know, when Phil's doing a road program, you likely, you know, look at what the condition of those water mains are and deal with those assets before you pave streets and that sort of kind of recurring capital. On that side, you're looking at a much more modest 5% rate increase, which means a little less than $2 per month per household. So if you are a water and sewer customer, you should, you know, add these together, $9.40 and $1.70 per month. That's what it's going to mean.
$11 or $12 a month.
Yeah, $11 or $12, yep, yep. You know, historically, where you've been at the 2% increases, I think, when we boiled down the last 10 years, I think James saw that average water and sewer inflation, just O and M, is somewhere between 5 and 7% per year statewide. That's driven by a declining pool of qualified operator candidates, you know, much like the folks that sit in this gentleman's chair, just the staff of people to fill the positions at DPW Water Sewer is declining. So, you know, that tends to result in higher labor costs over time. We can't control fuel and chemicals. Power is, you know, I think you've been very proactive on that front in trying to, you know, look at opportunities in the community for renewables and such. So those still exist, but a lot of the things are just out of our control, sludge. I know you've lived through that, as Montague went through, you know, their changes and how much you pay to get rid of the sludge. So, you know, there's just a lot of things Eric and the crew can't, can't control. You know, Tony on the water side can't control, but 5% is a pretty, pretty modest. It's basically just, you know, that's inflation, basically.
Right. And I, of course, I believe the residents, or the majority of residents realize this. Of course, we have so many more people on the water, which also could, I would imagine, increase the operations and maintenance as well. But the mechanics, or the mechanical portion of this is the wastewater, where there's much fewer residents on that. So, you know, it's a matter of...
Gravity's working to your favor on the water side.
Yeah. And honestly, this is a conversation that's been going to happen, right, for years, that the rates really needed to be more in line with what reality is versus a modest increase that really wasn't covering the costs by the rate payers, but more, as we've talked about a couple of times now, the town as a whole have been funding, have been funding that, so.
On both sides, as far as Western Mass goes, you're ahead of the curve. You're well below the median statewide. Even after the proposed changes, you're probably 60th or 70th percentile. But as far as Western Mass goes, we see some pretty crazy water and sewer rates because of our small utilities with either declining populations or flat growth, and that is troublesome, as we know with tax rates and everything else in Western Mass, so. But you've done a really good job up to now. It's just time to take the plateau.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Diana or Ed, did you have any specific questions or comments?
This was really laid out in a way that was easy to understand and made sense, and you did a great job.
We've got to give credit to Eric. He fixed the engineer's version this morning.
They sometimes make it sound a little too complicated, so I...
That's right. No offense taken.
You bring them back down.
He does.
And I believe we're going to have copies of these that we had talked about can leave out at Town Hall, the library, wherever you guys think would be great for people to get this information before maybe a rate hearing happens, so.
Anything you want to add?
It's a great idea.
Do you have copies of the calculations that were meant to these $454 and $567 costs?
Yeah, so the number that we use for the consumption is actually right here. That's the average annual consumption for a residential sewer user, and there's no base fee associated with the sewer, so it's just the rate times that number.
Betsy, did you have something?
Can we just correct the date at the top?
It's July?
Although I wish it were July.
Sorry, I missed that part. My fault, my fault. I missed that part.
Oh, nice.
I missed the simplest part.
I'm living in the future, Eric.
That's all right. Or the past.
We looked at this budget, I said that.
We'll resend copies, you know, put those out.
I agree with Diana. And thank you, Eric. So David and James, thank you. You know, it's a discussion that nobody ever wants to have, a discussion, right, about increasing the cost or anything, but it's so important, you know, water and sewer. I mean, you know, that those utilities are just important for the residents, for the businesses, for expansion. And, you know, I think the good news is, we've completed, you guys have completed with the town's approval, the study. And that's what we wanted to find out. I mean, we did the study, and here's what the study shows, and this is where we're at, and we can do nothing, and we'll still be there, but eventually, we're going to have to do something as a town, as a community, as rate payers. And it's just a matter of when. And as you alluded to, it's a matter of, you know, kicking the can down the road. Ed likes to use that expression, too, with different things, you know.
It's always more cost-effective to be proactive instead of reactive.
Absolutely, yeah.
And, you know, when you hear 25%, that sounds a little bit scary, but when you, it's $9 a month, it's not. So I like that you put it in perspective that way.
I lived in a place where it went up 75% in that scale. So, like I said, like Dave always says, it's either pay now or pay more later, so, you know, we can either make the effort now or later, so.
Well, and even the, you know, the, what, 4.3% construction cost increase per year of $12 million, it's a lot of money.
That's the, that's the scary...
And so it just doesn't make sense. Deferred maintenance is just too costly ultimately.
You have good leadership, you know, good department heads, you know. You've got a workshop committee that's become vested over the last year. I think I'm seeing a lot of the signs that, you know, will likely make Hatfield a really good partner with USDA, and then the residents decide at the end of the day. You know, you have rate hearings, you know, you consider the input from the public, and then when it comes down to appropriation, the residents ultimately get to say. So they'll decide whether it's in the best interest of the town, so. Just trying to help you make informed decisions. That's our job.
And we appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your...
Are you going to say one more thing?
No, I was just going to say, if you kick the can down the road, then in five years, that 12 million now becomes 20 million, you know. I mean...
Well, eventually, it bounces off, something comes back and hits you, right?
Right. Yeah. Well, plus, I think about, you know, one other thing that David mentioned is that, you know, you'll be eligible for a grant through this program.
Right.
So, you know, if you're taking a $12 million investment and you're going to get a 20% grant, so, you know, you're not going to have that through a regular bank, or even through the state's not going to give you that grant.
Right, no.
And my understanding is, right now, the USDA has the money for these grants.
USDA is about as financially flush as I've seen in 25 years right now. I mean, listen, we're going into an election year, so things can bounce around. You can't control that, but, you know, the program's been politically independent in terms of its ability to continue over the generations, so I feel pretty good that even if there was a one-year road bump, like we often have with an election, that that program's going to be there. So we may have to kick that can at a year. We might not get the grant the first time and might have to go back. I mean, you can write a book on working on grants, right?
Yeah.
So, but that's just...
Sometimes you need some patience.
Sometimes you just need to keep being precise.
We're not eventually, though.
Yeah. Goodness to you.
I, actually, you just addressed a question I was going to ask you, which was, so, our next town meeting's in May, and so when would you expect that the application, should everything go the way as we're looking?
Yeah.
When would an application maybe be going out?
It's a good question. Marlene asked the same thing last week when we met, but just kind of planning for the warrant and everything, it's sneaking up on us. But I think in an ideal world, you'd make the decision that you'd submit the application to USDA, you know, the first step, you know, ideally get your rates, set your rates as soon as possible to where, you know, we recommend they be subject to your recommendation. Then pursue the application. That could either be part of the proposed budget, or it could be a separate article at town meeting. That's really, that's over my pay grade relative to how Hatfield wants to pursue that. But I think trying to submit the application this summer, fall, puts you in line with their annual timeline. They're on a December 1 fiscal year, so being kind of first up, best dressed, you know, in there, ready to go. It's a pretty beefy application, you know, it's a, it's an engineering report, which we can repackage from what we gave Eric. It's an environmental report, and then it's, you know, as Joe, James and Marlene are going to have to put together a couple pounds of paper. It's, it's not a fun application, which is why you don't do it if you're looking for a million bucks. You can go get that easier on your own. But assuming that you receive a favorable response from USDA 10 months from now, then you'd be looking at potentially putting an article for a major capital project on the warrant next spring, spring 2021. And the way the program works is they'll only give you a soft commitment until you appropriate the money. So hence the kind of chicken and egg, you know, analogy is that they'll tell you, hey, we think you're going to be in the ballpark of this much grant at this interest rate, and they have three levels. We hope for the lowest, they call it poverty again, and then you have a decision to make with the residents whether you're going to get that money appropriated. But they won't give you the commitment until you have the appropriation in place. They want to see that you have some skin in the game. But that's, I think that's the timeline that we, that we talked about, finance, you know, maybe not formally, but had an opportunity, and, you know, that timeline seemed like it made sense for your workshop group as a whole, so. We'll keep supporting you and work hard to hustle for money. I mean, that's, that's what we ultimately need to bring the residents, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Just for further guidance-
I'm sorry?
Just for further guidance or direction, would the board like to continue having a discussion regarding the water and sewer rates for the next meeting? Or it is the Board of Selectmen that vote to set a rate increase? But before the board is inclined to do that, then we could have a public hearing on the rate increase?
I, yeah, I don't see a reason to wait.
Have a hearing.
Okay.
Let's see what we have.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Hi, Sean.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm well.
Good. Phil, as long as you're sitting there, we've got to talk about the recycling contract that Murph-
Well, I was on the phone with DEP today, and they have extended the contract until 2/28, so you have until then to sign the contract.
Oh.
But the contract's in front of you now, it's not going to change any.
Do I have it?
I recommended-
You can have it in advance.
It was originally scheduled for January 31st, they put it out another month. So it's a five-year contract. We went to town meeting for the approval to enter into a five-year contract with the Murph that passed. My recommendation is going to be to sign it. There's no penalty if we don't bring them any materials, because right now we're under a study on that whole operation that's going on up there with the transfer station. Collecting a lot of data, you know, from Dave Wickles, who does our hauling, we're collecting data from USA, how many households they pick up at town, we've got the data from how many people are using the transfer station, what the revenues were, so we have to put all that together to come, and we want to have a workshop with the Board of Selectmen before we bring it out to an open meeting, just to get your thoughts and to get, well, which way we intend on presenting it to the public. So right now, the contract does, after all the workshops I went to with the Murph, with the senators that hosted it, that there's going to be a cost to recyclables. So the first year, the cost is $93.50. Throughout the five years, it raises $20. Right now, you were getting money for recyclables, that is no longer in place because there's no market.
There's no market for it.
So right now, the Murph is going to be charging $93.50 per ton. So last year, we brought 111 ton into the recycler, into the recycling center.
Amen.
111 ton.
And if we don't have materials, they will not penalize us.
Correct.
Because I know you and I had talked, you said you were curious to-
Yes, because in this contract, it states that they can get out of this contract if there's not 17,000 ton delivered. So as communities go forward, I see that there's going to be other options for a community to go to somewhere, because right now it's more expensive to deliver a ton of recycling than it is to deliver a ton of trash.
Do you, I, maybe this isn't a fair question, but do you expect that to be the trend going forward? Is this some kind of weird blip, or is this just?
I don't think so. I think that, I mean, I mean, if it was a blip, I don't think they would be increasing the cost yearly, annually, for the next five years. I think they would wait a couple of years and see how it played out if there was a market for it, because if there was a market for it and you were still being charged $93.50, right?
Well, so it's $93.50 the first year and then a $20 increase for the following year?
No, it's in here.
I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
Well, just let me look quick, it's in the back.
Because if that's the case, in essence, it doubles over five years.
It's $93.50, and then it goes to $95.84.
Oh.
Yeah, then $98.23, 169, and then 103.21.
I thought it was going up $20, it was, so I thought, I thought by the end of the five years, we, basically it doubled, so we're paying almost $200.
Well, you know, when I first started here 10 years ago, we were getting, you know, $5,000 every six months for bringing the recyclables. So you're getting almost $10,000 a year back, and that doesn't happen today.
No, so we give up getting 10 and we're going to pay out 11.
Last year's what they, what the Murph, you know, what the receivable was here from the Murph, it was $288, so.
Right, so it's a $21,000 swing.
Costs us more when people bring recyclables to the transfer station than it does when they bring us trash.
Right now, this coming year, it will, yes.
That's crazy.
But, but you can't dump it into trash, because if they pull a load of trash and see the recyclables in there, you're going to-
You're going to be rejected.
-reject the load. You know, I mean, the dual stream that we have up there today is this, if you're in the single stream, which everybody thought was the biggest deal back then, it's $145 a ton, so, you know. It's the cost of doing business, I guess, because there's no market for it.
Right.
We have any idea, Phil, excuse me?
Go ahead.
Quick question. What the, what the private recycling haulers are charging or what their costs are?
I talked to USA because I wanted to get some data from them, because USA has bought out Amherstucking. So it is currently, I think, is it $9 or $7 a week?
It's $400 a year. For both trash and-
Yes.
It's $400 a year. Okay, and I guess to my point, we've got to get to, we could get to a point where we're pricing ourselves out of the market, so we need to, which might be advantageous. We no longer recycle in Hatfield, we just let a private-
Well, that's why we're great. That's all we're waiting for, the studies to come back, yeah.
What we need to-
Part of the reasoning, we asked Phil to get out, get out with or get with somebody that's in the, in the business, so we can figure it out. And you're right, Mike, that might be something we have to look at.
And they're happy, you know, the conversation that I had over there, you know, they would be more, more than happy to deliver that service to the town of Hatfield.
That's right, that's the other option.
You know, because right now, I mean, we sold 411 stickers out of 1200 households, so.
So a lot of people have already made that choice.
800 other people are going somewhere else.
Right.
Well, you see a lot of containers out on the streets on Thursday, Thursday.
Right.
Right.
You know, it's, you know, I mean, with all, I'll just give you a brief summary, I mean, with all the, the revenues we received last year was $53,000 between the stickers, the people paying right at the transfer station for dumping debris, you know, dumping construction debris, and the annual sticker. So we took in $53,000, and the cost to do business up there was $71,000 in the budget, and we spent the whole budget, so, you know, between the help and the electric and the repairs, so, you know, lost money.
Did that include receiving any funding for recyclables last year, or no? This has already kicked in?
$288.
Oh, that's it?
All right.
So, so in the old days, when we used to make $11,000, it would have been a net loss of $7,000. But so now it was negative 18, plus we're going to have to pay 11 on top of that, roughly, to Murph to do it.
Right, and plus in my capital, plus in the capital, there's a, you know, there's an, there's a, there's a request for a new compactor for $60,000, so.
When are you going to have the information from Dave Wickles?
USA is going to give me the information, I talked to him yesterday.
Okay, all right. I mean, that'd be nice to know.
But in the meantime, you're saying we should accept this because we-
Right, you, I mean, you can wait till the 28th, I mean, you surely can wait and see if I can gather some more information. I mean, like I said, when I, on the phone today with DEP, they said that they extended it to February 28th.
The deadline was January 31st.
All right, so what, I would, I would suggest to my colleagues, well, I was going to say, we don't want to wait till the 28th, but we'll have another meeting in two weeks, so maybe you can, you'll have a better idea from having dealt with the other companies where we stand, if you guys are okay with that.
I mean, do you, Phil, at the present condition, do you foresee the town in the future, everybody having to go to private trash pickup and we no longer can afford to run the-
Many discussions I've had with, you know, with the staff and with other communities and you don't want to give up the transfer station because you'll never permit it again. So you want to keep the transfer station. My recommendation out of all this whole thing might be to have a private hauler do the waste and recyclables and keep the rest open.
Yeah.
Just for the purpose of, who knows, someday-
Like demo and computers and that kind of stuff, yeah.
Someday, maybe the recyclables are going to go through the roof again, and you're going to want to reopen it to recyclables, but you want to have the ability to do that.
So you're saying it was still accept, like demo and computers and-
Selected type services.
Right. Because right now, what you're charging, when people come into the transfer station to dispose of like electronics or TV, it covers the costs.
So it'd be more a pay-as-you-go?
Correct, yes. Plus, you know, the staffing, I mean, it's not only the people that work there, I mean, it's right in this building with people, because it's the only place you can get bag stickers, right? The only place you can buy them today is in this building. You know, and you figured you sold $26,000 worth of bag stickers, that's a lot of stickers that people in the secretary's office had to stop what they were doing to sell. So on the administrative side, it costs you money.
Right. Sean?
I mean, I think a big piece of it is that you probably have at least 600 people who have already made a choice to do that.
Right.
I mean, there can't be more than a few hundred people back of the envelope who are doing something totally different with their trash.
Right.
I don't know what that would be, like taking it to work and throwing it in the dumpster or whatever, but, I mean, you know, how many people can really be doing that? So you've created, I mean, so already, you have a whole bunch of people, more than the majority, making a decision to do something else.
Right, because I, one of my conversations with Eric over at USA was, how many dumpsters are there that people are using?
Right.
He said it's very minimal, you know, it's not over 20 at a household.
And those people probably don't also have a dumpster, you know, I mean, they're, you know what I mean, like they're paying USA or Amherstucking or whoever it's well, they're just doing it in a different form, you know.
All right, so, yeah, why don't we, if you don't, if you guys are okay with it, we'll actually make the vote at the next meeting after we're able to bring back some more information.
There's only one piece of the-
Okay, yeah, as long as we're not holding up anything, so now that we have till the end of February, we can, we can take it up at our next meeting, I think. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Did you say there was one more thing?
Is there more?
Or we're good?
I just want to say that, you know, we had a work injury at the, at the Highway Garage, you know, I don't want to mention the names, the employee's going to be out to March 2nd, so, you know, so with the snow coming, we might have to have a temporary employee in place.
All right, thanks for the heads up. I hope they're recovered quickly.
One of them was just on vacation.
Okay, anything else for Phil while he's sitting?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, one item. If we could have at least each month, just an updated report of where the mass grant is with the engineer, if we're, we're staying within what the contract called for, for progress.
And the other thing I just want to mention is that out there on Chestnut Street where Gilheret started that water main, but due to the blacktop plant closing, you know, we, I was on the phone with Ryan Gilheret the other day about how he has to maintain the trench, so that's a big thing during the winter months, that, you know, there's some potholes that pop up out there.
I travel that road a lot, it can be, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, it's heavily traveled, so he, you know, he assured me that, and I saw its path, so.
Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Ed, Diana, anything else? All right, Phil, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
So, continuing with our posted business, we have to have, or we're going to have a discussion regarding the, the account, finance accounting position update and the accounts payable service agreement. So, Marlene, I don't know how we want to have the conversation, I know our friends from Finance Committee are here, and I know they've got a recommendation to the board, and I concur, by the way. I mean, is it more than that, or do you want me, I didn't know if-
I'll just summer on it.
Sure, so Betsy's going to-
Maybe you should come up.
John's waving you forward, if you don't mind.
Should they all come up?
Generally, I can be seen in a crowd.
All right.
You should all come up, there's seats for all of you.
Come on, Kim. I get feedback from townspeople about my TV presence. I've been told not to chew gum.
Ah.
It's unattractive, apparently. So I'll just-
Only to not gum chew.
Okay, I didn't know anybody was paying attention, but now you know people actually watch the show. Show. I hate to put a show in.
Yeah. Oh, boy, all right.
So, yes, the Finance Committee, so members of us participated with Marlene and with Brian in interviewing possible candidates for a full-time position here, and although we identified a suitable candidate, he chose not to take the job. And so then we talked with two accounting services who could provide the necessary accounting services in addition to what the town needs to do. So Sharon is working in many jobs right now. Which jobs are you holding right now?
I don't know, all of them.
All of them. And we need her to continue to do that. We probably need more help than that, but in addition to that, there's sort of the high-level accounting work that needs to be done. Both these services are able to provide that, and, but we enjoyed meeting with both of them, and they seem to have very reasonable processes for exchanging information with the town so that that would run smoothly. There are two big differences. One is that one of the services is not able to start probably until April, and the other service is able to start immediately. And because we have some catch-up to do in order to batten down the hatches on FY19 and get going on FY20, we feel that the sooner we can get going on that, the better. We looked at pricing, Marlene, am I correct in remembering that the, both services, why don't you speak to that?
Well, we, I think it's fair to say that we made it very clear that there is a chance, a possibility that we may have to rely on them to close out 19, while we're really hoping to complete 19 with, with Justin Cole, you know, there-
So their summary of prices was that Heath Melanson, did I get that name right?
Melanson.
Melanson Heath was going to charge us a certain amount, and the PVPC, right?
Right.
Service was going to charge us less, but then he mentioned in the phone call last week that they would create an additional contract that they would charge us for to close out 19.
That's right.
So all in all, I think the numbers come to about the same, and I felt, and talked with other members of the Finance Committee, that the sooner we get a service in, the better. So we would propose going with Heath Melanson as soon as possible.
Okay, so, so thank you for that. And I would agree, I think either would have been, have the backgrounds to hit the ground running. I also understand that both of them thought that they would be coming in and starting fresh, and that when we said you, you have some cleanup to do for 2019, they went, oh. And I understand that, that, you know, that's the cost of doing business, right? So I couldn't agree more with you guys. And we obviously haven't had a conversation about this, but I think waiting till April is just not even an option. If we've got somebody that's, that's willing to start now and everything else between the two companies is basically the same, why wait? It is my, is my feeling. That's my thinking. It's, it's not that waiting any longer gets you anything more, it just basically gets you three months behind, three, three months less work, so.
It, it would put us behind and further waiting until April 1st.
Right. So, so I would agree that Melanson Heath is, is probably the way to go. And we can talk about the, you know, we can talk about the contractual way of, of doing this and certainly through the end of the fiscal year would be my, at a minimum, would be my recommendation, which also gives us a chance to see how, how it's going, right? So.
We heard a little bit through the grape.
Excuse me, Betsy.
A little bit through the grapevine that the candidate we had identified as a potential full-time employee might be interested should our situation become more stable.
Okay.
Love grapevines. Did you want to say something, Mike?
Finish set a book before you go.
Can't say as I blame, can't say as I blame them or?
Ben's done that. Have you, what's the nature and scope of Melanson's proposal? Is there a proposal and is, is it, is it a, like a one year, for a one-year's contract? Is it a month-to-month? And is there a separate?
We talked about?
Part of it for catching up with 19?
They are expecting to do all of 20.
Yes, 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 and yes.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yes.
They are expecting to, to reconcile all of fiscal year 20. They do know that there is a chance that they may have to do some cleanup for 19. There's the possibility, that would be a separate rate.
Is it an hourly rate that they would charge, Marlene?
An hourly rate to clean up fiscal year 19.
Separate from whatever the contractual rate would be on 2020.
For 2020.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep. But we don't know, Mike, we don't know yet exactly what we need for 2019. We'll have better, probably by Monday, we'll, we'll know better where the current, you know, where, where Justin is.
Right. And it's one of those things that just has to get done, so.
Right.
But they weren't within ballpark of each other.
Yeah. And will the 2020 rate, 2020 or 2021?
It's going to be an annual rate, is that right?
It's an annual.
And what is that approximately? I really just wondered.
Forty-eight.
Was that Melanson Heath also?
Yes.
Okay.
Which sounds to me like it's?
It's a bargain.
Yeah.
Correct.
Compared to the state, you know?
Yeah. Okay. Oh, Sharon, I'm sorry.
Forty-eight doesn't include the AP services. We've outsourced the AP services.
That's correct.
Okay.
Looks differently.
Thank you, Sharon.
Yep. Okay. So, so thank you.
That's it.
Yes.
Marlene, are we looking tonight to make a, to the board to make a vote, right? Is that, is that the expectation?
I would be grateful for that.
Well, I mean, you know, waiting doesn't?
Yeah, we would be.
Bias anything, right?
Yes.
Other than more headaches, potentially.
Headaches, right. So, okay.
It would be in our best interest.
Yeah.
I will make a motion that we hire Melanson Heath, both to do any necessary cleanup for FY19 as deemed by the financial team with Justin, and also to hire them for the FY2020 work.
And I'll, I'll second that motion. I want to thank the committee for all the work you did on picking Melanson or, I think that was a lot of, a lot of time and effort spent.
It was.
Getting, getting the right people.
So the motion's made and seconded. So the only comment I have would be, we're going to need to verify, or did we verify with them that they would be willing to go through an end of June type thing? Oh, okay, so that's?
We did.
All right. So that'll be, our first step would be, I didn't know if we needed to amend our, our motion or not, but the intent is to hire them through June 30th of 2020 at this point.
Right. For, to?
Okay.
To handle fiscal year 2020, which goes out June 3rd.
Right. I just wanted to clarify or verify for, for now and that, that's no reflection on anything other than?
Right.
So that's, you know?
It's a short term.
Right. Okay. Motion's made, seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys very much. We appreciate all your input.
Thank you.
Bet?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Mike?
Five minutes while we're still here.
Five minutes?
Two questions that I want to just ask everyone. One has to do with the $50,000 cash variance that existed at the end of our '18 audit, at which time in the audit report, the auditor had basically suggested that the town deal with that audit, that variance at some point, either through a, on the tax recap sheet or at a special town, or a town meeting, whether it be special or not, to adjust that balance so that it's, it's no longer a variance? So I guess my question is, you know, has the town dealt with that variance yet? And if not, how and when will we deal with it? So that's, you don't have to answer this, I'm just posing these questions on the record.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Also from that same audit report, they indicated what our debt limit would be according to state statute as a community. And they had indicated that our total debt limit, given our tax base, the way they calculated the state, is $27 million, which means that we could theoretically borrow up to $27 million as a community. Right now, we have on our books some $5 to $6 million of government, of GLB, which is the obligated debt, government obligated debt, general obligated debt. I have mentioned this before, but I just wanted to go on record with this, that if we took our existing principal and interest payments in total as a community, we took our budget and added all those up, for fiscal '20, it's somewhere around $565,000. Okay? If we took that amount and assumed that that was a payment on some borrowing that we potentially could make, if that was the annual payment, because that's what we're paying out now, if we refinanced our existing debt and used that as a payment, an annual payment, at the current state house note rate, which is somewhere between 2% and 3%, we could borrow as a community about $9 million. Okay? We currently have $5 million of general obligation debt on our books. That means that we could pay those loans off and we would have another $3 or $4 or $5 million of borrowing potential that we could use to help fund major capital projects that we need, badly need right now and not increase our principal and interest budget at all. So my question here is, has anyone bothered to look into this financial strategy, which is basically refinancing our debt, looking at some borrowing over 20 years, paying off our existing debt and also taking advantage of that debt capacity that we have, of another $4 million that we could use and apply to some major capital projects that we've got outstanding at this point and not increase our budget, the principal and interest payments portion of our budget? So I, I just would like to suggest that someone look into that. I've mentioned it several times before. I don't think there's been any action taken on it, but it, it could be something that would help us as a community stabilize the tax rate by not increasing our debt.
Excuse me.
But also being able to borrow more money to, to use on some of these major capital items that are looking us in the face at this point. So that's, those are the two questions.
Thank you.
And I would like to give this to Key so that she can put this as part of the record.
Sure.
And, thank you very much.
You know, I, it's, I would say that that sounds great on the surface, Mike. I, I don't, I don't know that in municipal financing and, I don't want to say government, but municipal financing and how things are done, if it, if it really can work that way. But, but having said that, I think it's worth researching to, to find out.
Right. By the way, the Department of Local Services in Springfield?
Yep.
Has resources that would help Hatfield determine whether this is something that's viable and it would also kind of hold our hands going through the process of refinancing. So I just wanted to share that with you.
I don't, I, I would, I would, I would suggest, I think it's worth looking into.
As we embark on the budget process.
Right. Right. Yeah.
For sure.
Yep.
First item notwithstanding, which is the $50,000 variance, but the more important one for the community, obviously?
Yes.
Is can we actually, for that same amount of money?
Do something like this, refinance our debt.
Avail ourselves of another $3 or $4 million to use critical projects. I think it's?
Yeah. I think that's worth, I'm kind of looking at Marlene, but she, her head's down, so.
Oh, I'm reading my notes.
I don't blame you. Maybe that's something we can?
It's a discussion that I can have with, with the treasurer's office.
Well, I was going to say, we can do that in, in the, our local rep who's?
From the Division of Local Services, David Guzman is somebody we would talk to.
I'm sorry, his name escaped me. So we can talk to David and just run it by, you know?
If you're willing to sit in on that, if that's something that you'd be comfortable with, but I mean, that's up to you guys.
Okay. Well, I, I think the question can be made and then see if it's got to be, if we can dig into it more and find out specific, you know, I'm sure if, if it's something that can, can move forward, how would we go about it, right? And that's what we would need DLS to, to tell us.
Right. We'd probably have to do a little analysis of all the boring that we currently have.
Oh, of everything, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Topic five is, so fiscal year 2021, the budget and annual town meeting articles process. It's the season, right, Marlene?
It is the season.
So you were just going to just kind of put that out there and talk about the meetings with the various departments and?
Yes. I did meet with the finance committee last week. I, in your packet, I've drafted a, there's a letter here from the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee to the departments that I'd like to get out this week. And also included is an FY20 schedule. And I think those, those dates are pretty reasonable. So as soon as we can get this memorandum out, we'd ask the departments to submit their budgets by February 14th and I think it's maybe a collective decision here, the finance committee and Board of Selectmen. Last year, departments were, met with the finance committee and Board of Selectmen on an as-needed basis. I know that in, in general, the departments like to, every department likes to sit down with the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. So I was just looking for input from the, the Board of Selectmen as to whether, you know, we, we set up the schedule with individual departments as, as?
I would?
Done previously?
I would suggest, you know, see what Diana and I think, I would suggest we set them up with all the departments and then sort of leave it up to the department, if it's a smaller department, if they do or don't want to, you know, as long as we get the submission.
Sure.
That's the important thing. But certainly give everyone an opportunity to come before the board and the finance committee to, to discuss their budget for 2021.
I'd like to hear from as many of them as possible.
Yeah.
Hopefully they'll want to come.
So given the opportunity, they, yeah. You go with that too, Ed?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, so, yeah, I don't know how we?
This looks fine, the timeline.
Yep.
And to meet with them the month of, have those meetings during the month of March is reasonable?
I think that, yeah. Yep. And we know, we, you know, and we know sometimes things come up. You know, you, you put the schedule out a month ahead of time, but, but, so we, we can shuffle, but that's just a busy time of year for, for all of us.
I mean, actually, what I do like is when we're over there with the overhead board, we put stuff up and everybody can see it. I think it makes more sense.
Oh, Betsy's illustrations.
Yes, we like it when Betsy draws.
Yeah. That's helpful.
The Betsy way.
Her, Betsy's visions, not Betsy's, but Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee visions on whiteboard.
Yep. Okay. So, yes, that sounds good. I think, I think all the departments should be invited to come.
And this, yeah, this looks great and the sooner we get it out, the better.
If you have any input, the budget letter, you can just shoot me an email or give me a call and?
Okay.
Make those adjustments. Okay?
Yeah. Thank you. So would you mind if we just took a, a two-minute break, please? Just to get a drink of water? All right. Thank you. And so we've got the budget guidance from the finance committee, the meeting schedule, we'll send, Marlene will send that out. I think the warrant articles that, I don't know, does anybody have anything they wanted to mention now or you want to wait till our next meeting to think about it and then whatever you think, Marlene, from a board?
Have some discussion the next meeting.
Yeah. Have some discussion.
Right. Yeah. I mean, for now, it's laid out when we, when you'd want things from the departments and?
Right. And then any articles?
I don't think there's really much we can discuss beyond that at this point.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I'm on capital planning and we're working on that piece.
Right.
Meeting very regularly on that, so we'll have that ready.
Okay. All right. You go with that, Ed? We'll, you know, we'll wait to see as article, as things come forward.
Yes.
If it's going to be an article. Okay.
It was brought up a couple of weeks ago, again, asking the Board of Selectmen to look at, I think it was a non-binding question, ballot question, to look at expanding the Board of Selectmen.
Yes. I said I would support a non-binding ballot question to find out for sure before we spend a lot of money.
Move forward doing it. Yeah. All right.
I'm, I still say I have no idea why this is even necessary, but that's a discussion for another meeting.
Well, I, I bring it up only because the town clerk would need, need questions submitted to her.
Right. But that, but not yet.
Not yet, no.
I mean, not, okay. All right. So, yeah, we can have that conversation for sure. All right.
I think her deadline is, she was going to get that to me and I think she sent an email to me today. It's early April.
It's the date minus so many days and all of that. Okay. All right. Thank you. Topic six, Marlene, we have under the town administrator report?
Ah, yes. The state is going to be commemorating School Choice Week during the month of February, well, actually between January 26th and February 1st. And so a proclamation has been prepared. The board wishes to endorse this proclamation.
This is, if I'm not mistaken, this was something that they brought forward last year as well, right?
It was, yes.
I think, I think it's a proclamation, I think it's, it's just to let people know that, you know, school choice is here, that it's, it's helped communities to diversify and economically and, and it's just, I, I think it's, the state's just trying to keep that it's helped communities to diversify economically and it's just, I think it's, the state's just trying to keep it sort of on the front burner. I mean, other than that, it's really not doing much, other than we're recognizing and acknowledging it and accepting it.
We support school choice.
That we support school choice.
I guess I would just add, as the only board member with someone in the schools, a student currently in the schools, just how much richer the experience is for her because of the school choice, students that are coming in. And it's just, it's really just a great thing. So, I think Hatfield's the better for having opened its doors to the school choice program.
Absolutely.
We might have, might not have had a scroll if it wasn't for school's choice. So, that's a reality.
That's not too far-fetched, but at least as the district as it is now.
Really some wonderful kids and wonderful families that have become part of our community through this.
Yeah, and bought businesses here. So.
So, I'll make a motion that we proclaim January 26th through February 1st as Hatfield School Choice Week and adopt the proclamation that we have here in front of us.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Diana and Ed. Okay, Marlene, we've got that note from.
Joe LaValle.
From Joe, yeah.
Yes, so he recently was appointed to the ADA Committee Commission. And he also, as we know, serves as the town moderator and he's on the Cemetery Commission. The town moderator basically receives a very small stipend, $90. But he had consulted with the State Ethics Commission and, under General Law, Chapter 268A, towns with the population of less than 3,500 have the ability to designate special municipal employee status. So, in this case, for Joe LaValle, it asks the Board of Selectmen to designate, give him that designation as special municipal employee.
Yeah, certainly not a problem.
Of course, I have no problem with this.
So, you need a vote on this as well, right?
Is this the motion here within the letter?
His letter?
Under 20.
I don't think so.
No, okay.
And I just also wanted to mention that as a member of the ADA Commission, he does not, he's not compensated for that.
I mean, his total yearly salary is $90.
Correct.
Before.
Oh, I see where you're saying that, second to last paragraph since I see what he did.
Yeah, I just wondered if that was.
I think he just copied and pasted probably from the statute.
So, this is just info.
The exemption, yeah, so what the Board would be approving.
To avoid a conflict of interest.
Yeah, because if you, apparently if you hold more than one appointed town position and one is paid. I didn't really, honestly, I've been through the F stuff.
He's just covering.
I really, honestly, okay.
I don't know that it's necessary, but let's vote in that way. Joe has done his due diligence and brought forward to the Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joe LaValle as a special municipal employee under the laws of General Law.
Chapter 268A.
268A.
Section 20.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
A question before you vote. Is Ed now an employee of the town?
He's not an employee, he's not an employee.
Special, as a special employee of the town, is he now eligible for any other benefits from the town?
No.
No, 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 it's just to absolve.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, no.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Farmland designation, Marlene, I think that's next.
Yes, you recall Bob Wagner had paid a visit to the Board, a Board meeting a couple of months ago regarding that soil testing. And that has been completed and USDA has asked the Board of Selectmen Chair to endorse the farmland of local importance for the town of Hatfield. Essentially, what this is, is just endorsing that, that survey was completed and the two soils identified, Limerick and Walpole.
Right. Limerick, silmarum and Walpole, sandalum.
Correct.
Yep, they need certain guidelines that they, I didn't mean to interrupt you, excuse me, that the USDA has put out. As you mentioned, and we had a couple of different discussions on it, but Bob was here to explain the process and and we voted to, you know, endorse it, to endorse the program. And now, tonight, the USDA is just asking us for a signature to, in writing, show our endorsement.
And you authorize the survey?
Yep.
The survey was complete. What this does is you're accepting the farmland of local importance and designating the soil.
Two, yeah, two types of soils.
What does it mean?
This was a report we had our last meeting, right, or two meetings ago.
Right.
Yeah, we just didn't sign it.
Well, it was further ago than that, wasn't it? It was a while ago, but, okay. Refresh my memory, though, about what this means for those designations.
Remember, you had concerns about 61.
I still have concerns, right, because what takes precedence? The soil designation or the 61A?
61A, according to Bob, yep.
So, my concerns were if the town would have right of first refusal on these.
That's right, and the town still would have right of first refusal, yes.
And in the letter from the USDA, it does indicate, and I think Bob mentioned this too, that the town of Hatfield is the first Massachusetts
Yes.
municipality to formally request this designation, necessitating development of protocol to ensure compliance with the Code of Federal Regulations and USDA wetland conservation policy.
Thank you for mentioning that, yes, that was important.
Alright, so we are, we had voted on this previously, they're looking for our signature as an endorsement.
We don't take a vote again, right?
No, you don't, it's just the chair signing.
So, you guys would go with me signing the, what we already voted on?
Accepting the designation, that's all he is doing.
Okay, right, take care of that after the meeting, thank you. Municipal vulnerability preparedness grant update?
So, although the town has not received an official letter, so we submitted a, an application for planning for, to look at the community, assess the community's vulnerability to climate change. So, they are, have notified town officials, there's several workshops being offered, and I will be attending a webinar this week, sort of sets, sets the whole program in motion for Hatfield. So, once we've completed the plan, you know, preparedness plan, then we will become a certified municipality in the program. And then, just to piggyback on that, the Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant will be, become part of this. That is a separate grant application that I submitted, and that's to update our hazard mitigation plan. So, over the next year and a half, we'll be working with Pioneer Valley Planning. They'll provide technical assistance in updating that grant, but this plan is, yes.
The vulnerability preparedness, that was, kind of came out over the last year or so, did it not? I mean, it were brought to our attention to be part of the whole, you know, you need to.
In July, in July, I was at a town administrators' meeting and Governor Baker was there and encouraging municipalities to apply, participate. And we know that this, they will be looking for this on future grant applications, any grant applications. So, that helped us with our Mass Works grant application, we hit apply.
Okay, so more to follow on that after your webinar? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Continue to, was there more on the mitigation plan or is that?
No.
That you were just letting us know that it's.
Yeah, I submitted a letter of intent and it said that is intertwined with the MVP.
Okay.
Grant.
Thank you. Alright, continue to old business, Town Hall Building Improvement Renovation Update.
So, you have a copy of, a copy of a letter in your packet to the Executive Director at the Department of Public Safety Architectural Access Board. The town was granted a waiver, a variance waiver, and we are required to provide them with updates periodically. So, that was just done recently. And I know Ed likes to report out, there are a couple of change requests in your packet that I had received today that will require the Board to approve.
Right, so before Ed makes a comment on that, thank you for sending out the letter to the Access Board because we know that they've, we've been on their radar for a few years now.
I don't want to wait for them to contact us looking for that information.
It's good to be proactive and show them the timeline, so thank you for submitting that to them, appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
So, yes, we have some updates.
I'm gonna ask you to bear with me, I'm gonna try to explain this the best I can. Okay, previously, previously, we had a meeting and there was concern of whether or not the town had a generator for the Town Hall. And the project originally did not call for a generator for the Town Hall. But there was a actual, I found out there was an actual electrical study done, which required two generators if the building was occupied. Remember that word, occupied? I'm gonna get back to it in a couple of minutes here, okay?
You didn't tell us there was gonna be a test on this.
Those two generators would have been over 32,000 each because we have two services now. We have a service for the main system, which is 120, 208-volt, three-phase system. And then, now we have a second service that's 480 volts for the fire pumps. So, if the building was occupied, they've required two generators for this building. And with each of those generators, one was 150 KW, the other was 125 KW. You're looking it up online, they were over 30,000 each. That's just the generators, not calling the pads, transfer switches, all that, so easily could have gone 100 grand. But it came to my attention, Buster approached me and said, "How about the generator that's up at Town Hall?" I mean, I mean, I'm gonna get back, not the one, the generator that's up at the DPW. Originally, what I came to find out is four or five years ago, there was an article passed in town for $11,000, and that was to hook up a generator for Town Hall.
That was last year.
Correct, they hooked up a generator at the DPW, which is up and running as a backup generator. And Buster said, "If this building is unoccupied, unoccupied, we could put that generator here and it would be just for the heating system if the building was unoccupied." So, in the middle of winter, when we have all these sprinkler systems in, fire pumps, all that, we would actually have a generator now for heating the building, so the building doesn't freeze in the middle of winter. And that project is something we all agreed upon would be done later, after this project was done, and that'd be a job that Phil does. So, they can bring that generator, which is a gas generator, we don't have gas, but we could actually convert it to propane. But we're also investigating with Berkshire Gas if they would allow us to actually use the gas because there's a moratorium. So, the good news is, yes, we're gonna have a generator. The article included 11,000, and that should cover the cost of installing it, putting on a pad mount, and then having an electrician come in and put a transfer switch in, might be three grand for the transfer switch alone. So, I just want to give you an update on that. So, that's actually good news. I never, I wasn't aware of the article, I wasn't aware of the 11,000, I would have asked that question previously.
That was just to hook up the generator.
Right, so that's, that's, that's good news.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So, then, there's no generator at the DPW?
There is, there is a generator up there, there was one installed, and at that time, they wanted to install one there and one here.
And here, yeah.
So, the one that's up there has been installed and it's, it's running, it's there as a backup.
Okay.
So, the other one's up there kind of in storage, is that, is that the deal, not being used?
The one that's for this building is sitting up there.
Yeah, okay.
It's in a crate or a box or whatever, and it's sitting up there.
So, let's talk about occupied and unoccupied, because if, I mean, I'm assuming that if we need a generator here, we're having some type of emergency, most likely town-wide, wouldn't we need to have, like, Phil and potentially emergency management people maybe here?
Well, we have an emergency management building, we have a generator over there, so. And let's talk about emergency buildings, there's another thing I come, I came to find out. Originally, the school was built with the intent that that was an emergency shelter, I mean, you used the word shelter.
Elementary.
Right. But over the years, with the changes, with the rules and regulations, I'm hearing, which I'm still trying to find out, is that in a temporary situation, we might be able to use that, but in a permanent situation, we're not allowed to use that because of the rules and regulations, you can't shelter people.
Of people in the building, right.
And this building was never designed, some people think that this building was set up as an emergency shelter. It never was, I can't find anything anywhere at this building. So, right now, as far as the town, which might need another discussion, we don't really have a approved emergency shelter. Smith Vocational School is what I'm being told is emergency shelter. I mean, Cindy's here, she can actually elaborate more on the emergency shelters and stuff. If you, if you could, jump right in, please.
My policy and contract agreement with the elementary school is our local shelter, okay? It was designed, in that way, a patrol electric put in the proper electrical lines needed and everything. In fact, they changed them a couple of years ago, so it would be that way. The regional shelter, run by the Red Cross, is Smith Vocational School. That's if it goes longer, that is also if they have room, and that is also if people can get there. Sometimes if the weather is that bad, you can't get people to that shelter. They've incurred problems there before being full, they've incurred problems with carbon monoxide backing up where they had to evacuate the shelter.
How many times has it been engaged, do you know? Like, roughly, in the last handful of years, has it been?
Yeah, like, once, once or so a year, maybe, yeah. Like I said, the Red Cross runs it. As far as the generator, there was one at the DPW, which we did use, we did do a couple of trainings with it, they brought it out. It hooked up through the south side of the building, and I fostered, as an emergency contact, he would come down and do that. He actually came down, trained us in it, how, you know, how it works and everything else. So, I don't know if that's the same when you're talking about using now or not.
No, I don't know if that's a portable generator that they had, or this generator, this generator is a large.
But there was one that was used.
Yeah, I'm being told that this is sitting up there, it was bought for the intent of this building.
Yeah, they just pulled it over here on the back of the pickup truck last time we tried, tested it.
But if we, we can hook it up if the building is unoccupied.
It just, I mean, it's a part of a whole larger conversation, but I've always had a concern with looking at anything down here as our emergency shelter because, thinking back, the floods of '84, how we were really flooded here, so it wouldn't make sense to have these, you know, we, we keep talking about all of our buildings, right? We need to have here, and we talk about things with the Council on Aging, and I still say we should start looking at properties that aren't right here, along the river, for maybe like a Council on Aging ultimately. You know, have it be somewhere else where you wouldn't run into that problem if we ever had floods, and I hope we never do, like we did.
Agreed, but then that came up and no one wanted, when the server was moved from here to the public safety building, it's still no floods on.
I know, that's, I think, I think.
I don't understand when that was done.
I think it's wrong to only look at this area for town buildings personally, but that's a whole different discussion. So, that's good news that we're able to save money on the.
Right, we're able to save money on that. So, any more questions in reference to the generators?
No.
No, thank you.
On the other items, there was a few things that popped up that's in your packet.
Yep.
When they did the ceiling downstairs and opened it up, they found a whole bunch of wires, so that became, that's an actual code issue that they had to address, so it's, it's a few grand on that item. And then, when they did the elevator on this floor, where the dumbwaiter was, the one wall was not called to be sheet rocked because that area wasn't intended to be used, but it would be either storage, it's a space to use, so it's now opened up, so they sheet rocked that, which sort of made sense to do now. And those were the few items that popped up.
Right, and those are the two items.
And they're all within the contingency, right?
They're still under contingency, again, contingency is intended for all these little things that pop up as long as we don't go over, so. Unfortunately, we're, we're tracking the contingency because we're, we're sort of saying, okay, explain to, explain to us why we need this? Or, while you're here, can you do that with the contingency, just to, you know, instead of paying more later down the road?
Right, well, and it's important to have the contingency because once you open a wall or pull up a floor or something, you find out what's really there or not, or not there, I mean, depending on circumstances.
And this is the time to fix it, so.
Right.
Ed, where are we in terms of the completion percentage of a project? Can you give us an update on that?
Mike, you need to go through the chair first off, and.
Mr. Chairman, could you give us an update on the completion percentage on the project?
Ed?
Well, we're pretty much on schedule. The weather's preventing the ramp on the outside here, and the weather's preventing digging the ramp back here, so, I mean, they're gonna start piping. That's the other conversation we need to have, they're gonna start piping. So, the other item up to the Board is, the sprinkler is gonna be downstairs, they're gonna spend a week putting in the sprinklers. And then upstairs on this floor, they're, they're gonna need about a week to do the sprinklers. So, we're thinking of asking the Board to actually shut this first floor down for one week, to allow them to get their trunk lines in, because it will, they're going right down the corridor, they're gonna run their trunk lines, and then they're gonna go and branch out to the rooms.
And have ladders, equipment in the hall.
So, it makes more sense that we just shut the building off, we set some people over an emergency management building for that week.
Or allow employees to work remotely.
And if the, if the building is closed, we still may need to allow access to the Treasurer's Collector's Office or the clerk, which might not be a problem because of the front. We just don't want people coming in.
It's a safety issue.
Because, because your ramp would have to be open, and, you know what I'm saying, so.
And I assume we'd schedule that so that it doesn't interfere with tax bill deadlines or anything like that.
Right, we'd coordinate that with the, with the town.
Yeah, the contractor's looking at the week of February 10th, they'll start in the back of the building and move forward. So, yeah, pretty much this whole floor, that week.
So, we're asking February 10th and. So we're asking February 10th, and I believe you were going to see if we're, be able to have that unscheduled.
Talk with the fire chief, and that is available for employees to work back there.
Well, have enough room and enough space, do you know? I mean, I know it would be cramped, but.
Well, it does, it doesn't make sense to start relocating computers back there, I know there's a couple of computers back there that we could just, you know, people could log in as themselves. Then there are employees, the assistant assessor, she can work remotely, but she needs to have a conversation with her board as well.
The only thing I was thinking is if you did it a week later, perhaps there'd be access to the schools, because they'll be on school break.
Yeah.
You know, I, whatever makes sense.
I can ask them that.
No, well, if you're all set back here, I'm just kind of like a Plan B, potentially, you know? Cindy?
It's a winter vacation, you're talking about.
Well, the kids are on winter vacation.
Right, right.
Right, that, that third week or whatever it is of February, just whatever, yeah.
I don't know if it'll help with planning at all, but the director of the Council on Aging was using, was going to be allowed to use room there, and it didn't work out, so that'll be one less person. The board voted to have it work someplace else, because that wasn't working out, so taking up space at all, expecting that you might have more room.
Oh, using the community room, yeah, she was going over there using her laptop.
Didn't work out, so we got voted, and she's using another location.
Oh, so I knew she just worked from home.
That'll free up, you know, any space she was using.
Yeah, she works remotely from home at times.
I'm sure.
It's very temporary.
We can.
Ed, something we have to do, we'll get through it, I'm sure, we have resourceful and patient employees these days who'll make it work.
Yeah, and we just need to make sure that the townspeople understand that whenever that timeframe is.
And make sure that their inconvenience is little as possible.
Yeah, we need to get that information out to the community, and I copied the Board of Selectmen.
You did.
On an email that I sent out to employees, boards, and committees.
So I think that once we firm up the date, if it's, February 10th is just ballpark, I mean, once it's firmed up, then we'll definitely need to let the contractors know, whatever date you give us, that's what we're letting 3,000 people know, so.
Well, as last meeting, February 10th was the date, but we can confirm it Thursday.
Yeah, we just want to know, and then, because once we send out the blurb, we want to make sure it's accurate, and we don't want them coming back and saying, oh, it's going to be, you know, so.
Would we have another meeting before then?
We're scheduled to have a meeting February 4th, so we would meet, so we would be meeting over in the community room that evening.
Okay, would we be televised?
If John's available, and he would have to bring equipment over there.
Just because it would be helpful if at that time, we could make the announcement very, you know, confirm that with townspeople.
He has, you have recorded over there previously.
Yeah, yes.
Last year.
Budget hearings, plus other things, I'm sure, other things as well.
Thanks, John.
Yep, thank you, Ed, thanks for the update, so we need to, you need to vote on these contingencies?
The change orders? Of the change requests, yes, I need to vote on those.
I will make a motion that we grant the two change orders as presented, do I have to itemize them?
This is number 14.
14.
Number 14, yeah.
That's for 2017.
Okay, number 15.
Number 15, yeah.
There's a motion made, is there a second on?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion made, seconded, and change order, change request number 14 and number 15 for the finishing near the elevator, thank you, in the ceiling. Motion's made, seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ed, for being, keeping an eye on those things. All right, what do you got? The municipal aggregation, community choice power supply program.
So the sign up or opt out option for that program expired or ended on January 16th, and information, a public notice is on the town's website, information regarding what residents can expect for billing, and nothing will change, information's available at the library, as I said, on the town's website, if anybody has any questions, they can contact my office, and that will pretty much, oh, and I should also mention that I was contacted by Colonial Power, actually Eversource had updated or revised their rate, so it's going to be a penny more than what they had originally.
Eversource was going to be a penny more?
Eversource is going to be a penny more.
Than they had originally planned?
Their rate has increased another.
Which was already higher than Colonial Power that we entered into the.
Was already higher, and it went up another penny.
Okay.
So more savings for?
More savings for those people who did not opt out.
That's right.
Okay, thank you, Marlene. By the way, so on that topic, though, if somebody changes their mind and decides that they don't want to have Colonial Power, and they, in retrospect, didn't send in the form like they maybe had wanted to, when they get their first bill, I believe, as a Colonial Power, as a supplier, there'll be a separate phone number, an 800 number, or, and probably an email address, to change their mind and decide to opt out and keep everything as Eversource.
They can also contact my office as well.
Or contact the town administrator's office, if you've changed, had a change of heart. Okay, thank you.
So do you want me to do this thing now?
Oh, the other thing, just one more thing, I'm sorry, the town's agreement with Colonial Power has expired, and I would just ask the board to renew that agreement with them. So there's a copy of it in your packet, the board just need to vote to.
This is, this is separate from what we're.
When we entered into an agreement with Colonial Powers for this program.
Yes.
You signed the same agreement.
Right.
It expired several months ago.
Gotcha.
And I'm asking the board to sign the agreement.
Okay.
An agreement hasn't changed, right?
It's the same agreement, yes.
Right, okay.
I'll make a motion that we sign the new agreement as presented.
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion's made, seconded, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So then you just want me to discuss this? So the 2020 marks the centennial anniversary of the adoption of the 19th Amendment, which granted women the right to vote, and so the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism is marking this suffrage anniversary by developing a list of historic women trailblazers of Massachusetts, and so after I saw this email and this program, I suggested to Marlene that we nominate Sophia Smith as a pioneer in education, and so Marlene and I have worked together on putting together that nomination, and we'll get that out, and keep our fingers crossed that that very worthy woman would be recognized as a women trailblazer of Massachusetts.
I think that's awesome.
Yeah, I do too.
I think so too, I think, especially, you know, in keeping with the 350th, and we mentioned that in the nomination, that, you know, it's an important year for Hatfield, and it would be really great to have, you know, her recognized as somebody who strongly believed in the education of women when that was something that everybody strongly believed in, so, and put her money where her mouth was, so I think it's, we'll just keep our fingers crossed that that works out.
We need a motion on that, or?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, perfect.
Nope, thank you for doing that, Diana, that's a great choice, great suggestion. Is there any other unanticipated new business?
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
There's a motion made to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you guys very much, thank you, John.